Anybody have any corrections or comments?
I would make a motion to accept the agenda as presented and the payment of bills. Did you wanna make any comment about that, Eric?
The Mila Lawn Supply is for the parts of, spare parts for pump station for the Masonville Township Sewer, which we get reimbursed for the township.
Okay.
We keep spare parts in case there's a problem on any of their pump stations. And BSNA software, it was budgeted this year. And that's for our overall software package that we use day to day.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Adala. Somebody support it?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Mantala. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Next up, under new business, we have a set public hearing for the Water Department Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Utility Application.
Yes, we're pursuing SRF money for a new intake and second transmission main. And this is part of the process we need to go about in seeking the funding. So, we're gonna have the draft preliminary project plan posted tomorrow, I believe. And that sets us ten days prior to the public hearing. And we'd like to set the public hearing for the commission meeting on May twenty second.
Before we do that, congratulations on the recent water report. That was nice to see in the mail.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, good job.
Glad you saw it. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
You said this is just a draft, but I mean, is it in a draft form because we just haven't approved it yet, or is there gonna be changes made to this?
I don't think there's gonna be any changes to that. I read through it last night. A lot of it just kind of explains the scope of both projects and why they need to occur. Kind of goes along with all the boxes and stuff the engineering firm has to check on the application. Kind of things like, is it gonna make an environmental impact?
Right.
Kind of gives the soil conditions of the area, the air quality, things of that nature. There's really no, like, design plans or anything. It just kinda gives you the project area where it's gonna occur. And that, what kind of alternat- alternatives there could be to these projects and why they decided on going this route.
On the one page on there, one page it would be, it shows the water intake. It's Figure Two, Proposed Project Area Map. If I'm looking at that right, is that intake that long? It's like two thousand feet out into the bay?
I believe from shore going out, I think they had it as like about eighteen hundred and fifty feet total.
Yeah, looking at the scale.
We always tell people it's roughly about fifteen hundred feet offshore. So it is a ways out there. A lot of that information, they took off of the most recent dive inspection we had. I believe it was twenty nineteen that we had that done. Twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen that summer.
The overall length, though, if you count the land getting to the shore, well, it's about two thousand even.
Yeah. And it was, is that correct that that was built, that intake was built in eighteen eighty something?
Yeah, and then a portion was done, I believe in the twenties and thirties.
Yeah.
That's the portion I'm more concerned with is the actual newer portion, the twenties or thirties. Just because we did see it one time, once upon a time, and I actually think the wood intake structure pipe is probably in better shape than that. And that's, that's a hard area to actually inspect. I believe when Eric was superintendent back in the nineties, they couldn't get a camera up into that area, and we never really pursued getting a camera up in there again. I just remember one time, it must've been late nineties, early two thousands, where we dug down to that pipe 'cause there were some things we wanted to do with it. And once we saw the pipe and how it was construct- constructed, we weren't able to do what we wanted to do. And it is our only intake, and it is the oldest portion of the water infrastructure. So it does, and I know that there really isn't much left to the crib out in the lake.
What's the, what's the pipe made of? Is it like ductile iron or something?
The pipe on shore is kind of like, like bands of steel that are riveted together.
Spiral riveted steel.
And the old, the portion under the lake, the wooden portion is kind of, it's wooden, but it's like barrel staves. There's like steel bands holding the wood together. There's a write-up in the packet of the condition of the wooden intake. And if anybody ever wants to actually view the inspection, I believe I have it on a thumb drive. It's riveting.
It's amazing that something made out of wood can hold up that long, yeah?
Yeah, I think just being in the water like that and never exposed to air and always having current being pulled through it every day.
Mm-hmm.
Amazing.
One of the divers that dove on it, it was Ray was his name. He had actually dove on the Mackinac Bridge when they built it. And he's dove on several wood intakes on the east coast. And he is a big fan of them because zebra mussels don't like them like they like steel.
Oh, huh.
He said as long as it's in fresh water like that, it should last. He's dove on some of them that were over two hundred years old.
Wow.
I think a hundred years, even on the new one, is a good grunt.
Yeah, that's kind of what we're thinking. It's like, yeah, and it's not the kind of stuff that you can just walk up to and, you know, look at. So, it would be nice to have a new one put in place and, you know, we can run them both and run the other one to failure. If it fails in my lifetime or not, I don't know. It would be nice to have that second one.
Suppose it would collapse and that would be the end of it, eh?
That's why concern would be more of a collapse on the shore portion than...
Does that keep you awake at night?
That's why it's in this plan.
Yeah.
This is, we were approached by, by EGO and, and by, because of the money that they have available. It's, it's, there's going to be a, a large loan forgiveness, and we're considered a disadvantaged community. And so, they recommended us to apply for it.
Oh, good.
And we are going through the motions. If, if we don't like the percentage rates or we don't like this, we can always hold off. So it's...
So the, the proposed, like, rate hikes, would they be better or worse? Are they, are they taking into consideration that we'd, we'd get, like, loan forgiveness or?
Yeah.
Or a big grant?
When I saw in there the way it was structured, it showed, I believe, the rates increasing by almost seventeen dollars per month. And I believe that was going full project cost. Cause I don't think we'll know anything regarding the loan forgiveness or anything.
They do for worst-case scenario, so...
Okay, so it might not be that bad?
Cause right, yeah, I'm looking at, you referenced that. I had a quick, two questions on that. The current, the total current charge for the fixed charge, readiness to serve charge, and then the water charge based on twenty seven hundred and seventy-four gallon average water usage is thirty dollars and fifty-six cents per customer right now for average household meter. If we paid back, if there was no loan forgiveness, and they had, they got, they had two rates in here. Oh, no, it's, yeah, no, I'm sorry. Two point seven five for twenty years. If we didn't get any loan forgiveness, we'd, we'd have to bump that to forty-seven fifty. Was that the seventeen?
Yeah, I believe from that thirty, which, which is kind of odd the way they did that because normally when we do rate comparisons with other communities, we go off of like a five thousand gallon. And right now, I think for five thousand gallons, you're looking at about that price because it's fourteen seventy-five readiness to serve.
Yep.
Plus a dollar fifty, I believe, fire protection fee or two fifty, two fifty fire protection fee, I believe.
Yep.
And then it's five seventy per thousand currently. So they were using that readiness to serve B plus five seventy times two point seven, I believe. Come up with that number, I think is how they did it.
Okay.
It was weird. That kind of surprised me the way they did it too, but on these projects with funding, I'm not really sure how they brought all their math formulas. And they use those residential equivalency units, and I don't really know how that's figured out.
How they figure that? Do we have to, to apply for this? Do we have to prove ability to repay the loan considering no loan forgiveness? So do we have to structure rates?
That's why we'd have to structure rates.
So would we, if we went into this with a twenty-year loan at two point seven five, which I believe is probably pretty close, cause the date on this reported is April probably, so before the last rate increase. I don't know what that's, how that would affect this, but would we have to set those rates showing the ability to pay back the entire amount? And then if there is loan forgiveness, can we alter those rates again downward?
That, I do not know the answer to. This is, this is my first time applying for a water system organization.
I would, I would say we could set the rates, we could set them lower. I mean, there's nothing says that we can't lower them.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but I, I know in other projects, like, well, maybe it's a little different. It was like a bond project. We have to show ability to repay the bond. So I don't know if, with the state, if they require you to show ability to repay a hundred percent. So, if we do have to do that, I'm hoping that if the loan forgiveness comes in nice and high, we can scale those back.
So are we gonna dive into this before we find out if we even get anything from the state?
This is how we find out what we're gonna get from the state.
Yeah, they go through this and then they...
We can't, we can't get to the next group without having a public hearing.
They pick the projects that they, that they are willing to fund for this year.
So, and Coleman, Coleman Engineering will be at the, the meeting also for that resolution because I believe there's certain things they also have to do at the meeting to, in order to, I guess, fulfill the obligations in the application process. I liked the pun about diving into it, by the way.
Yeah, nice one.
Make a motion to set a public hearing for May twenty second.
I'll support. There's a motion by Commissioner Mantala, support by myself, to set a public hearing for six P M. May twenty second at City Hall for the Water Department DWSRF application. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried.
We did just get the rates study every five years. All the EGO or DQ goes as all the water departments and the wastewater departments turn in their rates. And we are in very good shape on the water rates. And we're actually a lot lower on the wastewater rates than I thought we would be compared to all the other communities. There's a lot of construction going on. But I will get to the, to the commission that they give you so much detail. Like, I'll give you the whole packet, but they have it alphabetically. They have it by wastewater rates. They have it by water rates. They have it by combined water and wastewater rates. And they have every scenario you can imagine. They have it separated and so...
Wonder how many people write that report, eh? Next up, we have the annual special events twenty twenty-three listing.
So, as in the past that we have done, I've always tried to do that in January, a little behind for this year. But if you see on your tables, there is an updated sheet as well for the twenty twenty-three. For whatever reason, I uploaded the, the one with the twenty twenty-two dates, so it didn't quite save correctly. But, so I did put a corrected one on there with the dates that I have so far. But the main thing is, these are the annual events that come before us with the organization and the event. This allows them to be approved here at the city commission level for that. They still have to fill out the special event application each year, along with updated liability insurance and, and with that. So, but this would be the annual list that we have so far, and if we could adopt that. Anything that would come after this would come to you individually. If it's a new event, we do kind of make them do a couple of years before us because we can provide some feedback for the, from the first year before it becomes on the annual list of, of things, so...
I noticed all the events are the same except for Boo Bash at the campground.
Yes, we did add that one. It kind of, again, just the, it's a city event. We do it every year. And so I had spoke with Jason and he's like, we should get that on the list. So we did add that. It is our event under our insurance, so, but it is, this helps us too as I get the dates too that I can, we can put them on our website or link to theirs, whatever, whatever we can do to help.
They've done that, that down there before, haven't they?
Yeah, I, he, he told me too, and I can't remember now, but at least four or five years, I think that. It, the date kind of fluctuates a little too, but it's usually around in that time. I, I don't even have the update. I want it in front of me, but...
September.
Yeah, so it's, it's a well-attended event for the Boo Bash at the campground.
Sons of the American Legion Flag Day and Retirement of Flags, is that, did that change, that date?
It, it is normal. I'm, I didn't have their correct one. It changes where, I mean, whatever date I believe it is that...
It's different. It was different on its updated handout than the packet handout?
On the packet, yeah, whatever. He didn't submit it yet for the date, so I wasn't exactly sure, but it is on...
Is it, it's usually sometime in June?
Yes.
Okay. Cause the packet had the fourteenth, and then this one had the first.
The first. I, I probably put the first in just as, like, I know that's the date, you know, to, to placeholder it for that. He's always great about getting it to me early and, and will plunk that date in. It just seems to always fall to on a commission meeting night, so that we haven't been able to go to it, but...
It must have not fallen on one because I went and spoke at one of them.
Did you? Okay. So, yeah, that's, I'm not sure. Again, that's why I placeholder it, just on the first. If they change it or they're trying to get it to stay on a consistent date, but...
We have one question. I'm looking at the minutes from the, back in the beginning of the pack and the, and the consent agenda from the rec, rec board meeting. They had June, I didn't know it here, June third and fourth for the North Bluff Open on the Disc Golf. Is that?
So that is a new event. You, that has already come, and you approved that before. It's their first one. It is a big one, so it's not on the annual list yet. Yeah, yeah, because it was a separate one. It was adopted individually. We hadn't done the annual list yet. So it is going to be on our webs, you know, our, our link on our website. It's their first year for that big one, so that we are hoping that it, you know, can become an annual thing.
Okay.
Sounds really awesome, but at this point, it's the first, the first one. So, these are just the ones that have not been before you, you know, to get your approval on.
I just didn't wanna have, it, it doesn't look like there was a conflict with anything listed on this one for the Disc Golf course.
Right, yeah, they've been all working together with that. I know that one is gonna be a huge event.
Yeah, two days.
Yeah, so, really, really big.
If I remember right, the Flag Day and Retirement of Flags, they tried to move it so it's closer to Memorial Day, so the flags are on the graves.
Okay.
I remember that discussion.
I remember there was a discussion of what they were trying to achieve, and so I now remember I just put the, the date of, of the first in there just to keep it for that month, but...
I would make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-three special events list.
Support.
The motion by myself, support by Commissioner Adala. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. Next up, we have the city manager's report.
I don't know where I put it.
Did you leave it in the copier? You were over there.
That is what I'm thinking. Oh, I found it.
Oh.
Let's see. Vicki and I met with Chris Katona. He's our MMRMA representative. And each year he comes and he brings our insurance proposal, which covers all our liability insurance and our equipment and truck insurance, and goes over all of it and explains what coverages we have and... Greg and I met with the P O L C and we're, we have a tentative agreement forthcoming. Had to run by some of the stuff. Mayor Joe is, he was working all last week. And the same with the I B W, W Union, Electrical Union. We, we almost have a tentative agreement. We're waiting to see what they send us back, so... Met with the city attorney last week regarding the Radford property. I know we, this was on the list a while ago, and what happened was Miller Canfield lost their, their real estate attorney that they use. And they have a new one, and I don't know if that was shared with everybody or just Joe?
I'm not sure.
Did you see the?
I saw it, yeah.
Okay. So it, it looks like they're recommending that if we do a lease, it should be a long-term lease, not a month-to-month, and there should be some sort of, of language about conveyance of the deed or, or a plat of the property showing that eventually the city would inherit it. And with or without a perpetual easement included in there. There's, the way, the way it's worded right now, he feels that it, it goes against the, one of the laws. I don't remember the name of the law, but there's a law about, about private property being tax-exempt. And because our lease doesn't cover all the points on that, we need, we need to do that. Also met with the attorney regarding the Irish Oaks Golf Course, which was sort of put on hold. And again, that, part of that was because Miller Canfield had lost their real estate attorney. And with the new attorney, he is, the holdup was the title insurance on all the splits that were done, more or less without our knowledge. And we want, we wanted to, to use a, a title insurance company that has done splits and done them in a, the legal way. So, that should be, we should be getting information back on that on Wednesday. And the other thing that he was worried about is zoning on the new split that happened. And uh the other thing that he was worried about is zoning on the new split that happened, um. Again, it without our knowledge that it happened and it held up this whole process we're going through. So uh we just told them that we had to have access to that property, the way that odd piece of property with the heart sheds looks. They would be taking away our access to our golf course, so. That's where we're at, it's been really frustrating. To say the least.
Lot of time spent on that.
Especially because we warned them this was gonna happen and they completely ignored us and. But hopefully we'll have good news by the next commission meeting.
Is it George Holton that was lost?
Yep.
Okay. Unfortunate.
So that's all I have.
Thanks, Eric.
Oh, Eric, um I've had a lot of people ask me about the North Shore project, what the status is on that and if there's gonna be any kind of um public meeting. Um, is there, ha- has there been pro- uh progress on that and is there anything that can be shared?
Um, we, we have met with um the investors and we've met with the developer and there's an architect that's been been hired. And we're waiting to see what he comes up with and uh so hopefully in the very near future, we'll have more news with that. Cause I know everybody involved is uh very anxious to get this going, because of the housing shortage right now.
Yeah. It's tough, uh uh there was a survey presented at the last um Hannaville Delta County Task Force meeting and. Housing was the number one concern of residents, over and above anything else.
It's just, it's the same, here we have people come in every day looking for rentals, looking for houses that are for sale and uh. Another good thing that happened last week is uh I had talked to Danny Marsh uh a couple of months ago about him uh. He, they own the piece of property across from Cameron School with, and uh only about a third of that development has been built and I. I told him, I said, Danny, the utilities are already in, you, we need to get that going again and. He agreed with me, but he said, the kids own the company now, so. One of the kids came over and we had a good meeting and uh so I'm hoping they, they're seeing that if they, you know, start putting homes in there, they'll sell, so.
There's room for quite a few homes in there too.
Yeah, it goes, it makes a big circle almost all the way to North Bluff Drive and there's a road that comes out on North Bluff Drive and then there's another intersecting road that would go across, so there's. There's room for quite a few homes.
Is that your uh Grand View Estates?
Grand View Estates, yeah. That's all I have again.
City Commission and Committee reports, anybody? Boarder Commission reports.
Um, well, I have an update on the the Hannaville Joint Task Force, so the the topic really was grants. Um, and so Amy Burgland from Invest U P presented, they are managing that fifteen million dollar regional fund of um state money. And it looks like they probably will have the Funding Opportunity Announcement done, they were very evasive on this, but um June-ish in the June timeframe. So it's fifteen million dollars and they're gonna do it all uh geared towards housing assistance and I think it will, it can cover, I think it was up to ten percent of a project. Um, costs, it's like a two a two percent loan, um and uh it's all for market, market based housing, not low to moderate income or. Um, anything like that, but you know, um workforce housing, I guess you could call it, or market rate housing. So that was um fairly exciting um to hear, it's not, there's no federal dollars involved, so there's no um Davis Bacon um requirement in invoked by this uh funding. Um, and uh it needs to be a shovel read ready project, meaning eighteen month um time horizon to get done, they're looking primarily at single family homes. Um, and then also um. City of Escanaba was there, the D D A from Escanaba, um Craig, and uh they're going after a six. There's six point five million dollars for the whole U P for this wrap grant, which is placemaking. And it sounds like Escanaba is going after five million of that for the old jail project. And then they wanna go after the additional one point five million of it too, so uh that's six point five million for the whole U P and Escanaba is gonna go after six point five million. So good luck, um uh but, you know, they've got an attractive project there, the old jail, um Sveelin and so forth, but um. You know, I I was thinking, hey, Gladstone should get some of that too, um.
Are they applying uh in this round, they're going for the six point five?
Yeah, yeah, that was my understanding.
We do have a couple of projects in this round too, so.
Is that site clear?
No, that won't be cleared till, I believe, next year. And no, nothing on it till twenty six, I know I was talking, I can, I'll mention that if I.
Okay.
But I think that'll do it as far as uh, so a a good meeting, but primarily about those two grant opportunities.
City Commissioner comments, you're on a roll.
None. Um, kind of dubbing what he said, I had the opportunity to um sit on the panel uh for the Government Day for Delta Force um at the Chamber. Um, was there with the county administrator, um member from the um the mayor of Es- Escanaba, Mark Amel and myself. And um talking some of the question about the jail property in Escanaba came up and being the county property. Um, the adminis- the county administrator had some knowledge on that, so uh I don't know if they're waiting on funding, but it's looks like it's gonna be. A couple of years before there's a structure there, um, cause that question came up. The other question came up also in our discussion here is, I got two que- I got two of the questions I received were the golf course. And the North Shore, so I'm glad to hear that there's some movement on those, cause um they are in, you know, on people's minds and they're giving from all over. All over the county take part in the Delta Force, um so Gladstone's on people's minds and it was nice to uh have some good news there to tell them about that. So I just also wanted to mention that the first cruise ship is coming in on the fourteenth. So if anybody wants to go down there and uh greet them, they're docking at eight o'clock, they're um. Coming off the ship, I believe, pretty, pretty quickly at that eight o'clock, they're gonna be there all day till five P M touring. Um, they have their own buses that provide land transportation, so um I plan on being there as a, you know. Ambassador for Gladstone and a, you know, county business owner um to meet those folks. Um, so that's the first one, and the next one's on the eighteenth, I'm gonna be rolling through regularly till October. Second, I believe, so just the first part of October, so it's exciting development for the county there and. Um, hopefully this gets off to a good start and we can attract some of those people to Gladstone, um I know there was, another one of the questions I had was. I don't know why I got this question, but it was, are the buses going into Gladstone or where else are they going? Um, they are going to, the bus routes provided by the cruise company are completely determined by the cruise company. So we, area attractions, businesses, groups can approach the company and say, I think it'd be worthwhile for you to come and visit here, but. Other than, you know, showing them around um the businesses, Chamber, City of Escanaba, City of Gladstone, whoever might have approached them, they really don't. They just kind of are advertising and then the cruise company says, this is the route, this is where we're stopping. So, you know, I know there were some questions and, well, how come they're not coming to Gladstone? This is their first try, um you know, on this part of the lake and uh hopefully in the future that it goes well and maybe we can get. Get a, get the bus to come um down here, I believe there's three or four buses, excuse me, uh providing transportation throughout the day and they're gonna be running a loop. Um, through Escanaba.
And they have an optional included trip to Pictured Rocks, right?
Correct, that's a side one that people pay for.
Maybe there could be a stop off, Gladstone.
Well, the, and some people were a little upset about that, why are they stopping in Delta County and then getting on a bus and going all the way up to Pictured Rocks? It's because this cruise company is not the same one that is, that started docking up in um. The Holton Hancock area last year and are doing again this year, so they wanna provide a Lake Superior excursion for the people on this side, they're only going as far as. Um, the locks and then they're heading to down to Detroit and Toronto, so that was their, again, that's all the cruise lines. Decision, so to offer those opportunities, so.
How how long do they dock over there?
All day, eight to five.
Just one day?
Yep, and then the next one on the eighteenth is, I believe, eight to seven. Um, I don't know why some of the days are longer, um but some, there's gonna be, the fourteenth and the eighteenth is gonna be the same ship. There's two ships, I believe, they're identical, other than the name, and there's about two hundred um people on each ship. How many of those are going to get off are, it's up to them, they can just walk around, stay on the ship, being Escanaba being their first. Stop, I believe someone would be kind of excited to um explore the area, so. Uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be interesting, um and it's quite an opportunity for the area, so.
And Vicky Nashaw says that where one cruise ship goes, line goes, others follow typically.
Yes, typically, yeah, so. There's a great opportunity here for not only this cruise line stopping twenty, I believe it's twenty six times between now and October. For other cruise lines to stop here, so um exciting.
Exciting.
And that's all I have.
Mr. Akala?
Nothing tonight.
Uh, I don't have anything either, next up is city clerk comments.
Uh, the only thing I can uh would like to mention is at the very start of our commission meeting tonight, there was a slight delay on the volume. Um, but got that going, so if anybody's watching, um I think I'm the only one that's checking in, but um that is, that is corrected, so. Just maybe missed the invocation and that a little bit, so that's it.
Thanks. Next up in our closed session, we have the city manager and city clerk evaluations, if everybody's in agreement, I would like to move it to the next meeting. Hopefully we would all be here.
Take everybody's input, I agree.
Yeah, I mean, we don't wanna push it out forever, but I don't think there's any harm in.
No, and if we could, um years ago, I think it was three years ago, you provided a list of your goals that was much appreciated. And if the city manager could do the same thing, that gives us a better feel for future, not right now, so, thank you. Do we need a motion for that, or then I shall do that, do it to the next meeting?
Support. We have a motion by Commissioner Akala or by Commissioner Mantala to move the city manager and clerk evaluations to the next meeting, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried, we're adjourned.